This conference will now be recorded.
Or that has been moved to the second.
Just a reminder, make sure I'm turned on the lights.
Well. Also, Town House Ordinance, I think that's, there's going to be a lot of discussion with that, but I wonder if we could move up, electing the Planning Board Chair up. Does anybody have any problem with that? If we move that, move that up?
Issues with that.
And then the new, the new chair can go ahead and take them, take the meeting from here. Um, so Zach, help me out with this. I just let somebody make a motion for, to nominate a new.
Yeah, entertain a motion to nominate somebody.
Okay.
Second.
I think nominations don't require a second.
I would err on the side of caution on there. If it's not a contested nomination, then I, I would err on the side of caution of having it seconded, but.
I just remember that years ago, that the nominations that didn't require a second was just nominated. But doesn't matter.
You could probably nominate and then the actual vote on it. I would need a motion in a second. I said you could probably make the, somebody can make the nomination. If there's more nominations, then once y'all arrive at that, you probably need a motion in a second for the actual vote on that nominee that's been nominated.
Are we motioning?
Yes.
We'll have to make a motion to re-nominate Susan.
Who else second that? Absolutely. So I really encourage anybody with any interest in, in chairing, certainly to step up. You are not hurting my feelings by, absolutely not hurting my feelings by doing that. I don't want anybody to get that idea. We, we really should have done this two months ago and I, I was wrong. I thought I was, it was up in, the year was up in May, it was actually up in March.
Madam Chair, if, if you don't have any other nominations, or if you do, you can always gracefully decline.
I can.
So I would call for other nominations.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I'm gonna nominate Neil.
Are, are you willing to, if, are you willing to accept if you're elected and?
Sir. In a runoff or something. I want to help and I want to serve. I don't think I will be the best candidate. I'm just doing experience.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. I would not decline to serve for another year. I have one year left on the board and I would, I would agree with it if I am elected. I don't know what choice we have at this point. So.
There's no other nominations, so nothing.
Okay, all in favor of me serving for another year? All opposed? And I will abstain from the vote, so it is one, two, three, four, five. Thanks, folks. Oh, thanks. I see my fan club is out here too. I'm sure they're excited about this. So let's move on to the Town House Ordinance discussion. Zach, can you just brief us on why we are, what the background is on why we're looking at this?
Yeah, so the engineer that's working with a potential townhouse development here in Cape Codaret passed this sample ordinance along that Cedar Point recently adopted. And so what I indicated I would do is to bring it to the Planning Board for discussion purposes and see if there is interest in putting some parameters in place to address townhouse developments. And if that is the interest of the Planning Board and moving forward on that, we might be able to have a little bit of discussion this evening, you know, in terms of what specific parameters are attractive to the Planning Board. And then at the June meeting, we could return with a text amendment that addresses the discussion that we have this evening. But right now with it being a special use permit process, ideally if there's some parameters that are put in place, that'll give the Board of Commissioners some standards to work off of when and if a townhouse development comes forward. So this would be potentially helpful to the Board of Commissioners when they're evaluating the special use permit and they would have some standards and criteria to work off of. So I could see, you know, probably some benefit to having some standards in place because otherwise it's going to be rather open-ended and it'll kind of just be up to the Board at that point to decide what parameters they're going to put on it. And that might vary from one development to another. It's still good even with some parameters and that's part of that special use permit process, but this would help, help to add a little bit more clarity, I think, for applicants coming through the process and then also provide the Board of Commissioners some standards to work off of as well. So maybe addressing things like stormwater, parking, you know, dumpster enclosures, density, the number of units per, you know, a certain size area. Those are all, you know, kind of potential, you know, aspects of an ordinance that would address those things. So I can talk about light trespass, you know, fences, common areas, you know, any of those things, ingress and egress to the property. Any of those kind of factors or things that you might want to consider in the discussion. And even if it's just this evening, yes, we do want standards or parameters. If that's the direction, we can go ahead and put something together and bring it back at the next meeting. But just wanted to bring this forward and this is what was passed along in terms of what Cedar Point has recently adopted. So just as a template to work off of and just some ideas. There might be other examples out there from other communities. So if the Board wants more time to research other communities, that's another option as well.
And, and I do think it's important that we, that we really hash this out in, in the UDO for these parameters because you know how I feel about, especially, I feel like there's too much authority with special use permits rests with the, you know, with the, whatever hat the person is wearing. I don't know if it's the town planner or the UDO administrator or what hat that person is wearing. But, but it does, it does not rest with, with the Planning Board. So I think it's important that we, that we get our desires into this now and advise the Board of Commissioners on it.
Yes, yeah, this would be the opportunity for the Planning Board to kind of define some interests and expectations for parameters for townhouses. And in that way, when it is going through that review process, there's some standards to work off of that reflect some of y'all's concerns or ideas as they pertain to townhouses.
And, and this is actually the existing standards for Cedar Point currently, right?
I think you said that this is, was recently adopted. So I don't know if it could be recently as in, I know that they just went through the UDO process. So that might be, you know, what that's referencing.
And do you know, do you know if Cedar Point actually has these four types of attached dwellings that they refer to here? Duplex condominium, townhouse and apartment. Do they have apartments there?
Not sure what that development is considered. Yeah, it might be condos or that might be.
It looks like condos. I've got a question. You know, it. You've had no, no anymore than. Condos. I have towns, so most are significant. This profit, like the question we had last month, wasn't really a complete application of the contract. Especially on the profit. So it is, I mean, I've never, I've not seen in the past where the Planning Board or Board of Commissioners comes out and says, oh, you can do this, okay? Unless we have a request in front of us. Understand where I'm going?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this request is specific to any one singular development. There could be more that come down, you know, down the road in the future. I know there is interest.
Town center, where this would fall into.
So I think this is kind of a big picture, not specific to one development. So this, I mean, because these standards are going to apply to wherever.
Absolutely. I love these standards over real close. Where I would be is, you know, if there was a request, it's, it's so close to what we had last month. It sounds like it's almost prompted, okay? And if you're saying it's not, I would think, I could see multifamily in this town, but not in that place. Because all the expectations around there, that's a single family development, a single family housing district, everything else in that thing is single family, separated. It's a golf club community. The.
Well, there are two condos and one's just right around the corner.
That preceded.
I know.
The design.
I know, but it's still a.
I think we need to define, or determine if townhouses are prohibited in the existing UDO because it's a single family dwelling.
That, you know. That brings us back to the art, the discussion around before about, what are duplex? What's, you know, what's the difference? I'm struggling with the difference between duplex and condo. Duplexes could be both branded, one side branded, or both owned.
But it's also the management itself that, that you have to take into consideration. How many of them?
It's not different than, that's not different than condo. You have an association as adjacent common property parking lots and stuff like that. So that's what I'm struggling with.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be important for us to, to determine first, among this list of, of attached dwelling units, what, what fits into our vision of, of the future of Cape Codaret and, and what does not? Because we're going to have to make a lot of changes to the existing UDO if we're talking about, you know, condominiums, which is basically, you know, very similar to an apartment building, but each individual apartment is owned and it's managed. Actually, I should probably, your attorney, I should probably let you speak to this more.
Not my area.
I thought you guys knew everything.
No. Oh, yes, they are.
Right, right, right. So, you know, one thing that we know is clear is that, is that not, currently nothing in town. We don't, we don't have to worry about this affecting apartments, right? We've got nothing in our existing ordinance that would, would allow for our actual apartment, apartment house currently. I don't know that we have anything that would allow for duplex, but as I read through these, these parameters, I, you know, kind of what we have down here in, in, on the small lots here in Old Cape Codaret, like on Veneda, you know, where basically they just kind of shrunk everything to, to fit on smaller lots. And if you, if you do all those calculations, it's kind of the exact calculations we have here, you know, with 50% larger for a second dwelling. So it seems like, it seems like everything, what I'm reading here, it, it seems like it makes sense. I don't know that it's something Cape Codaret wants, but I will, I will say that almost everything that I've read in here made, made sense to me. Some things, you know, concerned me a little bit. I think there was something in here about height, that the height, there was a 50-foot height requirement. Now I can't find it. And that troubles me because a 50-foot height requirement, we're talking about a four-story building now. And our height requirements in town are 40 feet. So.
Limits.
Limit requirements, oh my gosh, yeah.
You understand?
So can I ask a question, Mike? So I missed the discussion last time about the multi-use zoning. So I feel like we were putting like the cart before the horse here. So if we want to follow that, that land use plan where we're having the density in that triangle area of town and that density would come from multifamily dwellings in addition to all the businesses. I feel like we have to figure that out before we start making parameters.
I agree with that because if you told me you were going to put a condo over there in one of, one of those tracts of land over there and you were going to put one over on the one that we talked last month, I think the list would be totally different.
Well, if, if it's, I, I know that we can do that, right? We, we zone by, you know, multi, multifamily. But we, what we have to do is determine what is multifamily.
Yeah, and so I pulled up a, there are some definitions in the UDO. So I'll just bring everybody's attention to that. The discussion last month was about mixed use. So that's a mix of commercial and residential. I think that might be getting confused with the multifamily. Mixed use can have multifamily, you know, but it's a mix of commercial and residential is that key piece of that. So that discussion last month was about mixed use. Tonight we're discussing the multifamily townhouses, duplexes kind of thing.
I know they're different, but I'm saying when we talked about the land use plan, we talked about density being to the triangle, which is where we were talking about where the multi-use zoning would be.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, part of the land use plan is directing density to that central area. However, there is the R10 multifamily zoning district that already exists in the town. So that is another option that somebody could rezone to R10 multifamily and then be subject to those standards. Or they could get through the special use permit process and without defined standards, they would just be what, subject to whatever is determined by the Board of Commissioners in that process in terms of parameters. So I think the discussion is, you know, if you know something might be coming in the future, you know, it's probably better to go ahead and put some parameters in place to address if there are specific aspects of that, that the town would like to regulate. If not, that's fine too, because they could go through, they could, you know, do a rezoning of a property, do a special use permit process. A couple of different options that might be available. Or they could do a text amendment, kind of with their wording, what they might like to see in there. So in the past, the multifamily kind of concept, that was that text amendment a couple of months ago. But that would have applied to the whole R30 zoning district. So there's different options out there. But, you know, this is just, do we want to put some parameters in place? But there are those other options that exist. You know, the R10M multifamily zoning has specific standards. So I'll scroll to that table, permitted uses. So dwellings duplexes would be considered a permitted use in that R10M zoning district. Now granted, a property would have to be rezoned to that. Same thing with dwellings multifamily. So a category right there, could scroll to the top. Isn't that R10M?
I think this is what we were going through though with the UDO and the land use plan is that we were doing the UDO first and then land use plan after. So now we actually have to go back and take a look at that ordinance and make sure it matches what our goals were.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely aspects that need to be updated in the UDO to reflect what was indicated in the land use plan. So this would be getting the sections of the UDO up to date with what was discussed in the land use plan. But, you know, in the meantime, that is a possibility in terms of it could be a special use permit process. It could be a rezoning to, you know, R10 multifamily. So there's a couple of different options that currently exist out there. The question is, you know, since it's kind of being brought up, do we want to consider putting standards in place now? I mean, the, the other option is to let them go forward with either a special use permit, a text amendment, or a rezoning to R10 multifamily.
No, I think, I think we need standards. I think, I think we need something to throw the door down.
Yeah, I mean, and it would give them kind of a basis or, you know, something to work off of.
So how do you do that if you don't know what the size of the property, the nature of the property or where it's at? How do you put these conditions in place?
Well, so if, if you think in terms of, like I, I keep referring back to the houses on Veneda because I love, I love that street and I have a friend who lives there. And it's this nice, it's a beautiful sized home on a manageable sized lot. And so that's kind of how I envision, you know, like what would a duplex? So if you took one of those lots and you increased it by 50%, right? Somebody's welcome to do the math for me on that. All right. Then, then that would fit a duplex. And to me, that makes sense, right? The size kind of fits, the setbacks would fit. So, you know, with what we have, we would have to make some changes, obviously. But in, in my mind, there, there is opportunities for that. We don't have a lot of opportunities to, to put these things we're talking about. But there is still some developable land and we want to have, I think we want to have some input into that. Now that's, that's our job, right? That's a planning part of what we do.
I think we have to have input into it, but if you don't know where it is, the size of the lot, geographical features, or the ability to set it, or all of that, if you don't know any of that, you're putting out conditions that may not even be applicable.
But I don't know that I, I don't know that I agree with that. I, I think, you know, if, if a, if a piece of property is not, is, is not an appropriate lot to build a something, right? Because of water features or whatever is, is wrong with that or elevation or, um, then that, that's going to be flushed out in, in the process before it even comes to, comes to us. I mean, we should be thinking more in terms of how much space do we want? What part, what areas of town would be, would it be appropriate to, to put multifamily? How, how big of a multifamily units do we feel the town can support? You know, I don't, I personally do not want to see apartment houses. I personally don't want to see, you know, condominium, you know, four-story condominiums. You know, I don't want to see anything over three stories. But that's neat, that's like, that's why I moved here was for that small town kind of, you know, kind of feel. I don't know anybody that has purchased property across the street from waterfront wants somebody to build a five-foot or a five-story home, you know, like they have in California where it's literally like property line to property line. Like those are the things we have to consider. And there are some interesting things in here that talks about public access to water. You know, so in other words, you can't, you can't just go and build some massive building and not let anybody walk through to get, to get to the water. And, you know, which, you know, is a big part of our town.
That's, to me, that's hard for the horse because I think geographical features of that lot, if somebody wanted to put, say, you know, take for example, the, the one that we were talking about last week over there, Star Hill, you know? I walked through that lot and there's a couple of ponds in there. There's a waterway owned by, patrolled by the golf course, but that approaches up into the property and all that. You look at the contour lines, they say it's about 10 feet difference, but I'm saying closer to 15, 20 feet difference in elevation from some of those pond areas. I, that would be, that would be a challenge to get something in there multifamily. With that in, in the fact that you're going to have to have septic.
Not, not if we have standards, you know, and if, and if.
You don't know what standards to put in place, Susan. You don't know what things to put. What do you have to do, Susan? I agree with Susan with that, you have to do it. Our cost, that they're putting to do it, that not going well.
Yeah, I, that, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you, Bubba, I appreciate it. Yeah, I think there are, there, there's no doubt that there are some, there's some parcels of land in this town that if you look on it on a flat map without contour lines or little blue lines where there's water, it looks attractive. But once you get out there, the cost to make that piece of property developable is, is just prohibitive. And that's why these pieces of properties was out there for so long. You know, perhaps one day, you know, we'll have an apartment in one of those places or, or whatever. But, but I do think that we, we have, that there are standards for building. I mean, it's not like anybody's going to come in and build an apartment house and straddle, you know, a water feature. Yeah, that's not, that's not going to fly.
But I, I think there's places in the town that multifamily would fit very nicely. I really do. But I don't know that I can sit here and put standards in place of what that should be when I don't know what the piece of property is. That, you could put all these things in and then you got to deal with septic, you got to deal with setbacks and you, you don't know what you're dealing with. It's like saying we're going to put this kind of a house on this lot before you've seen the lot.
You can't write, I mean, you can't write a UDO to reflect every individual property in the town. I mean, it'd be a thousand pages long to try to do that. But like, for instance, R10 multifamily, you know, that has specific parameters up, got it up there on the screen. That's already in the UDO. And that's, that's providing those standards for development to adhere to. So it's some, maybe somebody has four acres and there's a vacant piece of property next to it. They get that vacant piece of property, combine them to get the five acres so that they're meeting the requirements that forth of the ordinance. But you can't, you can't predict for every circumstance that might arise. But the goal is to develop something in the ordinance that is uniform and blanket enough that it covers whatever circumstances might arise. And then that's up to, as Susan said and as Bubba said, it's up to the developer to determine if they can adhere to what those standards are and whether that site is feasible to meet those standards. But it's our. But it's already in there for the R10 multifamily. It has some specific standards for multifamily. And then it also has standards in that zoning district for single-family dwellings as well, so.
They're very minor compared to this. This covers lots of things, that's only a few things that are required.
Yeah, and I guess the question this evening is, this is an opportunity to put more things in place to address any possible circumstance that might come forward. That's kind of the focus of this discussion, is do you want to put some standards in place for when these developments do come forward? Or is this sufficient? And, you know, the direction to somebody who might want to do multifamily is go for a rezoning to R10 multifamily and go that route. Or they could go the special use permit route, and then that'll kind of just be up to the planning board to vote on the statement of consistency, whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the land.
I hate that idea.
And then it would go to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners would set any specific parameters. But that's, you know, currently what the process would be, so.
So if you turn this around, I understand, I understand the argument pretty well. But if you turned it around, suppose a developer came, I don't know, 2A, 3A, 4A, and he wanted to put a multifamily on, bring it to the board. Could we not do that process at that time, after we know what the size of the land is? And, you know, determine all those things? Wouldn't that be a lot more straightforward and easy? Or would that just be done by a special use permit?
So right now, the route is probably going to be the special use permit route. And then it's up to the Board of Commissioners in terms of what parameters might be set. But those parameters really should be, those conditions of the special use permit should be based on what's contained in the UDO. If there's not a whole lot contained in the UDO, then there's not a whole lot they're going to do in terms of conditions. So I guess the point is to give the Board of Commissioners some conditions to work off of in terms of determining what's suitable for these types of developments. Because in the absence of any conditions to work off of, you know, they're going to be rather limited in what they can address. They have to tie it back to those standards of the special use permit, you know, health, safety, welfare, you know, tying it back to those conditions that are standard for a special use permit. You can make some argument for different things, but having specific conditions is, I think, going to be a better approach in terms of allowing the board to have some conditions to work off of.
Well, establishing predictive, also, I think it'd be attractive.
Sure.
They're not winging it, they kind of know what's going to apply and what isn't. They can, I mean, they're running businesses. They don't want to get halfway into a deal, then have it get shot down because of, in their minds, some arbitrary decision that might have been made, because there weren't established standards, am I right?
Exactly right. I think people are looking for some guidelines. We're looking to use to establish density, height, marking, all this.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But people are looking for direction. If you don't want to hear anything on roads, working this sensor, and how to turn down with this stuff.
I mean, if we just look at, you know, the standards of evaluation, like, where it starts with 2A, and it talks about the actual sizes, they really do make sense. Four dwellings per acre, that's a quarter acre. Well, my goodness, that's what's over here. We've already got that, right? At least 50% larger. So you're talking about if you wanted to put a duplex in an area that was zoned for 20,000 square feet, then the lot would have to be a 30,000 square foot lot for that to happen. So if you kind of just run through, and then as it increases, you know, as it increases in size, you know, obviously increases, you know, the density. So the highest density would be six dwellings per acre. That seems like a lot.
No, you don't, it's not. May I make them up?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I understand your point. The 13,500 square feet. And that is a nice period. And that map, historically, for information, was recorded in 1958. It was the first map ever recorded in Kansas. And it gave three different sizes of lots. Some were 13.5, some were 20,000 square feet, and some were in between. Now, but there are duplexes right now on lots of 20,000 square feet. Right now existing in Kansas. There's one in Star Hill, and it was built years ago, years ago, like a mother-in-law. But if the definition of duplex is two kitchens, then my house is a duplex. It was always built with two kitchens. We built our house in the eighties, early eighties. We put a kitchen on the first floor, in case one of us broke a leg or something, little did we know. And we put one on the second floor. Well, and when that broke his neck, we had to move him in there. And he lived in the basement with his kitchen, a duplex, for eight years, until we could renovate another house. But I don't see the necessity to have more than 20,000 square feet of duplex. I just don't see it. It's, there's a place on Holly Lane that's a duplex, that Barbara Deberry owned it. She and I were commissioners back in the seventies. I mean, I know these things exist and, right? And you're not detrimental to the town. They don't hurt the values of property. And more and more and more, we are getting requests for, well, I need something my mother can be in next door to me.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But we don't want to live together. We want a mother-in-law home, patio home. I notice patio homes aren't in this definition. But we want a duplex, you know? And 20,000 square feet is plenty, particularly if you're caring for one or two aged or aging parents. That's all. But I think we need to seek out, this request over at Star Hill is the first request we've had in decades for a multifamily. And I think we ought to embrace it and try to accommodate. I'm not interested in doing anything within the term. I'll tell you that right there. So there's no need to establish parameters that goes with the meeting. But I think we should help, shouldn't we? Find out what he wants to do and see how we can help him, see how we can accommodate him. Because he's not going to do anything that people don't want behind his head. That's just pure business. And it's our job to plan and help, in my opinion.
Well, we want to make sure that whatever we're doing is something that we can apply.
It's going to be a status quo, isn't it?
Right. Yeah.
And it's difficult to participate, like we suggested. Yeah, for example, that property over there that we talked about last week, 4. something acres, and there's a whole lot of that property that's unusable. You pretty much have to have a package set with them on it. I don't see any other way, unless you only put a couple of houses on it, which wastes a lot of space. So what I had to, Bubba, when I walked through that, um, found it, how can I, I would have to have something laid out, figure out how to do it ahead of time. If I put all these restrictions on it first, I don't know which of the restrictions I would put on will be helpful for the town and which wouldn't be. That's the issue, right?
I think that's outside the purview of the planning board.
I think the planning board is the people that should review it and not the Board of Commissioners, why? I think we ought, if people want and they want to do one of these things, I think it's the role of the planning board to help them make that possible. But if you write all these conditions ahead of time, you have to do this, this, and this, and this, and that, that's high.
Well, they're not conditions, they're standards. So that's...
They're pretty much conditions, though.
And these towns, oh, I don't want to speak off. They're talking to you. And a house is not, does not have the bedrooms on. A townhouse is not like that, it's something where you have your house and accommodating an elderly person, because the elderly person is not going upstairs. My son, he's on Mark 72, and I haven't been upstairs to his bedroom since he left. And so a townhouse is two bedrooms upstairs. And that's the way it is, is not for elderly people.
Well, I think as we go forward, we probably want to get some clarity on what a townhouse means.
And I think we need to move because Star Hill is what Star Hill is. It's not a townhouse community. The two units on the lot are not supporting you, because they were built here.
Sure, this is, Mike, I have to bring up something that is important, I think. Now, I lost the thread that you were speaking about. But what I wanted to say is, these condos, take the ones on Taylor Ocean. They've been there since the seventies, okay? There are four of them. They're all less than an acre. Each one has its own septic tank. Plenty of parking, you know, two parking places per condo.
And backyard, yeah, yeah, backyard, yeah.
Looks like one nice, great big house, and it serves a need. Two of those units, the ones on the ends, are all single-family. And two of them in the middle have the bedrooms upstairs. And it's just, and it's an acre or less, an acre or less, with four septic tanks, nice driveway, two parking places per unit. And it looks, yes, sir, and it looks like a great big house. It's...
I'm not saying that's not a good thing. What I'm saying is, you take one acre, put it over in some other place, and you can't do that there. You can't get four septic tanks and four drain fields and...
But the health department figures that out, not us.
Yes, but you already know what they're going to say. We've got lots right down in here that don't hurt, okay? I'm just having trouble being real specific. Now, if we only put a few general things in place, that might be, that might be the way to go. But I don't know that we can get specific, because I think whenever you get into multifamily, if you get into there, septic's going to drive the issue. You're probably going to have to have a package unit. And do you want package units like, for example, if people don't know what package units drive down 2400, get both down, that's a package unit for quite a few houses. But you're probably going to have to have it with the density.
Well, if you, it talks, under density increase B, it talks about, you know, how that's treated, right? So if you have a requirement for an off-site septic, then to meet the standard, you have to remove that space, that package plant or whatever, from the calculation, right? So you've got an even smaller area. So it seems like, I mean, that makes sense to me, right? That would certainly alleviate any concerns, you know, without not having appropriate sewer and septic for multifamily. Right, that's a way to control, you know, to control the density.
Well, it's a way to control densities, but the issue with some of these package plants, the fact that, you know, we're single-family and they all got individual septic systems, division, that's pretty, reaching both sound, you know, fecal polyforms all around them. And these package units, and I recognize the health department's going to be the one deciding. You pretty much know ahead of time what they're going to say, you know?
Yeah.
How much spacing, how much size.
I am, I am foolish when it comes to issues about septic. To be honest with you, I'm not real clear what a package plant is. So I don't know that I am qualified to make any standard about septic. I have to give that over to individuals who are trained and certified and, you know, that can do that, and advise us by giving us a standard. You know, that is either, you know, for us, what is the standard for us, right? We've been doing CSPs on this board. The standard was a septic permit from the county, thumbs up or thumbs down, that's it. That's all, that's all we were interested in. You know, we don't have the ability to say, okay, well, this health department said yes, but not good enough for me. We don't want to go there.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying. Why would you say, if something specifies septic system of any kind, then the health department's going to decide that and it's going to be depending on the lot.
But it's not, we're not suggesting in any of these standards, I'm sorry. You wouldn't, yeah.
Well, yeah, and there's 100 other things that are on this list that we're looking at. I would have trouble without seeing the property, knowing which ones I would want to put in, that you're applying.
I think they're all saying the same thing. People are just looking for the general guideline, can't do this project work. Things set for us to develop it. Otherwise, you're going to push everybody to study these conditions, which is fine. But it's just eat your damn ass and guideline, so.
I can't get it. If the guideline's minimal, that probably doesn't work.
Well, it appears that, I think these are pretty minimal. I mean, there's numbers in it, but it's still pretty minimal. I mean, I don't agree with Paxton on what she said about that it's fine to put a duplex on, you know, in 20,000 square feet. I know, and I'm not trying to be mean when I say this, but there are some little duplexes over on the island that, they're like little tiny cinder blocks, like two of them side by side, they're like these little tiny things. And I don't know that we want, like, that's what we want here.
Well, we no longer have the privilege of determining the square footage of any home.
I know, you're right, you're right.
I mean, a builder can build them as small or as large as the market demands. That's the whole thing.
Well, we can do it in a planned community, in a private planned community, they can dictate that. We can still dictate it in a homeowners' association community. But not in a, not like here at Old Cape Parteret, we can't do that.
The town can't.
Right, right.
The planning board, I just want to be helped to get people what they want to buy, to live in, to let people build what they want to build, sell to people.
But I think it's still some monetary pain that they can make more money on. But in the fall, because otherwise, why would they try to do something that this is not for? Certainly, though, in my neighborhood, we used to lease the rental. And we were talking about it, so, I don't know.
But nobody's proposing in your neighborhood, nobody, nobody. And you have protection.
When he's talking about the time, about two times on the golf course. Where there was someone...
Yeah.
He was around two times on the golf course.
Well, we're not talking about anything near the swimming pool or those.
But anyhow, to me, the only reason I can see that anybody would want to build a condo before the rental plan is formed is because they make more money.
Oh, I disagree.
Now, then they have bedrooms upstairs, you know, those condos over the, uh, 1900. No, they, they may go nice enough.
Yeah. Yeah.
There, there's a lot of data that's like that, um, and that's all they.
And, and go to town.
Yeah.
Comment. So, I agree. I think we need to take a look at this some more in depth and sort of all go through it. I think that it is, it would be beneficial if we had another set of standards from another area. Cedar points one, that's great, but you know, there's probably things in another town that we would see that they haven't included that might be interesting to us. Just for our own situational awareness. And I think that we need some clear definitions on what a townhouse is, what a condominium is, what a, all of those different categories are. I was on Nationwide Insurance's website when we were having this discussion and they have very clear definitions of what those are, and they have to. So, it has to do with who maintains the yard.
Right.
Who maintains the inside of the dwelling. All of those things are part and parcel with the definitions of those different dwellings. So I think we need to have something very clear so we can say, this is a condominium, this is a townhome. And so when somebody comes before us later on and they say, we want to put a townhome in, we know exactly what they mean.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an action item that we define those terms just for our, for ourselves right now. So I will, I will put something together that defines those terms. I could be totally wrong, but at least we're all on the same sheet of music as well. Um, and then there was something else, another action item I was going to, oh, from, um, other multifamily. Standards.
Yes.
From like.
Different towns.
Do we wanna, we wanna do towns our size, littler towns, every, it's gotta be in North Carolina. Do we read that, everything we're gonna work out is North Carolina?
Another coastal town in North Carolina would be. Just something, something sort of far away, like a toast or something, just to get a little bit of a different flavor.
Like.
And one thing, I'd like to understand which of these things that we're talking about condominiums, townhouses, duplexes, which of those require zoning change? You know, all of this thing up in Star Hill included thing was, it was all R30, okay? And I don't understand that. And maybe, maybe we can find out this. So if we knew those things and things that Neil was saying, it'd be easier.
What don't you understand?
Well, I don't understand of all these different types of structures that we're talking about, multifamily, duplexes, which require zoning changes from right now.
Everything in town right now is zoning single family dwellings, so anything would require zoning change.
Well, yes, but I wanna be specific to know exactly what it is, uh, that, you know.
What does zoning change mean?
Good.
Well, yeah, what, what is R10M?
We, we were having, Susan and I were having a discussion about what is the difference between a four unit condo and a duplex with regard to some?
Everybody, if a four unit condo, every person owns, that is a single family dwelling. It has one mortgage, or, you know, one, one person owns it, it's got a backyard, it's got an outside area, you maintain, you know, your outs. So there's, there's a couple of different things that make it different than duplex, but I think I can cover that.
Okay.
With, even if I'm wrong, at least we were all talking about, talking about the same thing. Um, so the action items are to define the terms, um, to find some other standards to look at. Um, can we, what can we do Zach, outside of this room? Can we just send it all to Barb?
Yeah, you can send it to Barbara, um, like what your markups are, and then we can kinda culminate that and send it out. Um, see if I'll have time to review it before the meeting. If you wanted to set a date for everybody to give that to Barbara, that way. If you sent back out, um, that'd probably be good to define what that date is.
And Susan, I think that this might be a topic that requires several iterations.
Oh, sure.
We, we come back and we talk about what we think it is and then get some clarity on that. But I don't think we can do this in one or two meetings. It might take three or four meetings to get to it.
Whatever it takes to get it right. Um, so today is the third. I think it's realistic, um, that we get something to board by. Uh, the 23rd of May. So that gives me a chance to do my action items and then disseminate it to you guys. And then we'll, and everybody does their own little chop, and then we send it to Barb. You're gone for two weeks.
Send it to me.
Hi.
You can send it to me.
One more thing for Zach to do. Okay, but that's where we're at, right? So May, May 23rd. Um, and then I promised to get something to you guys, uh, you know, what I've signed up for by. Uh, May, like. Well, okay, but what I'll do is I'll send it to Zach and then Zach can disseminate. And then, so everybody's, so we're doing it legally.
Yes, sounds good.
And Zach, you've got a minor role in this. Could you, uh, put some clarity around, like for example, we have R10M, okay? Now, does a, uh, a two unit condo, is that R10M also?
Yeah, so I think the.
Or a four unit?
So townhouses is gonna be where you have a unit that shares two walls on other side, right? So it's kind of in a row and you're sharing a wall, you got neighbors on both sides. A duplex, it's typically just gonna share one wall. So that's gonna be kind of the difference.
Well, that's because it's only two units. If you build a two unit condo.
It's also, it's also one owner.
Pardon?
One owner for both sides. That's how a duplex works.
I've seen duplexes that are owned by two different people.
Well, then they would be, then that would be condominium.
Okay, I just want clarity around that so we know whether, something like those apartments up in, on the north side of Pine Lake are zoned R30.
Yeah. And so are the ones on Pine Lake, I mean, on Taylor Ocean Road. It's all them.
And I just don't understand the distinction yet. Duplexes get R10M.
Well, Dottie said it a while ago, they were non, they're non-conforming uses because they were built.
I understand that, but they were built in 1972 when the ordinance came through '74. I understand that, but they're still zoned R30.
Right. Non-conforming. If they burned down, those people would be in a world of earth.
So, and I think those units, and I might defer to Bubba on that a little bit too, um, but I think those are townhouses, right? Cause they're sharing a common wall.
Yeah, they're condos.
Multiple units.
They're condos.
They were sold as townhouses.
No, 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 they were not. I was here.
No, I'm talking about they're selling now as townhouses.
Well, they are, they have documentation. That defines them as condominiums. They are in the book of unit ownership in Carteret County Registry.
Right.
They are defined as condominiums. Each unit is owned individually. They have a common area surrounding them. And, uh, they're condominiums.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't know, uh, what's the difference between that? The, I agree with you. There's four different owners of those four units up there, and the common area is owned by the association.
Correct.
Okay, but what if there was? Would a townhouse be that same thing? That's what I don't understand.
Look, I don't know either, but condos are owned individually, but condo association, main thing.
I think a lot of that has to do with the roof. This is my opinion. I think a condo, the roof being those individuals is still owned by the association. The townhouse, you actually own that roof with ownership. You could own that section. That's, that's mine.
That's what I need to know that clearly before we, it's part of all the.
Well, I'm gonna try to mush that out. I'll do a little bit of.
That's fine.
I'll do, I'll Google.
Yeah, but, but the condos are defined by the declaration of unit ownership. The declaration of unit ownership, which is in not the ordinary deed book, but the unit, the UO, the UO. Unit ownership. I could, I could show you.
Well, we, at this point, we just wanna all be on the same sheet of music as we, as we go through the standards. So I.
I think condos and townhouses, townhouses might all, I mean, they probably both be multifamily for the purposes of what's in the table. Um, like dwellings, multifamilies, a permitted use in the R10M multifamily. Um, duplexes are also permitted use in the R10 multifamily. Um, so those are, and then, single family dwellings are also permitted use in the R10 multifamily. So I'd encourage everybody to look at the current standards that are in there, um, for R10M. Look at what those parameters are. It's in that table section, and then there's also another section, the UDO, that talks about that. But we're probably talking about the same thing because whether it's duplexes, multifamily, or single family, it's gonna fall probably in one of those categories.
Yeah, but, but we also have the ability to recommend a change to that as well. If we find that the way that that's stated now, we can recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we make some changes to that. So that one may be considered single family, one may be considered multifamily, right? I mean, that's, we're talking about, we're talking about a list that, that we, we recommend.
Yeah, I think it would be good in the definitions section of UDO.
Yes.
Sell all that out. Make sure it also aligns with North Carolina Building Code so that there's no conflict on those definitions. And then, you know, also to consider is that, you know, these are permitted uses in the R10 multifamily. So if there's a particular tract that meets that five acre requirement, you know, they could go in and rezone it to R10 multifamily. Theory, and it'll be a permitted use, not a specialty.
Right.
Um, or flip side, somebody could come forward and go, first, I'm gonna use permanent process and get that route with it. So, um, that's just kinda how it's currently laid out. I don't know if that's the best way.
Say that again, please?
Five acre requirement for R10M is not a five acre requirement across the board. Go through and read through the UDO and notice that it's five acres and only requires it's a church.
Required for what?
Church.
There are, there's a small, we, when it says five acres on that table, below that, there's a square footage, I believe it's 7,500, 7,900, something along those lines. That is what requires for multifamily dwelling.
7920. But it requires 217,000 square feet. According to this.
How many thousand?
This one, this, this, this Cedar Point one.
Okay, folks, I, I totally stress when the meeting goes like over an hour. And, and so we're, we're bumping up against like, I think like an hour and 15 minutes.
All right.
So, yeah, so can. I'm sorry. So can. Uh, I would like to move on to the text amendment for the stormwater ordinance. Is everybody ready to move on? If we take a deep breath and move on to this other thing? So, at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, stormwater, uh, study and, and an engineered plan. And, and I totally dropped the ball because I said I was gonna call somebody and I never, in fact, Bart called me and said he hated to do it. I didn't even remember how he said it. So we are back to that now. Um, but what I recommended is that we put together a statement that we all agreed that this is what we want. This is what we're going out to an engineering firm for. Yeah, I see that. I was gonna, I'm just, I'm giving background. I'm wasting the last two minutes that I said I was, before I stressed out. So, um, uh, the statement that Bart provided is on April 28th, 22. Town staff reached out to John Freshwater inquiring about the cost of an engineered stormwater plant to meet the requirement for two inches of retention within a 24 hour period utilizing swims. And then Mr. Freshwater came back and gave us, um, some prices, which was 85 to, um, 120 an hour depending on the complexity of the project. Uh, and he advised that it would be somewhere between 500 and 1,000 depending on the complexity of the project. So, so now I understand that what we're looking for is that, that requirement is two inches of retention within a 24 hour period. That's what we're looking for, right Zach? Okay, so, is the town happy with what Mr. Freshwater has provided? Or do we feel like we want? Because I'm not even clear on, on what this says, right? So I get the metric of two inches of retention within a 24 hour period, but I thought we were looking for something for the entire town. And I don't think we're gonna get that from Mr. Freshwater for five and a half.
Whoa, 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 I felt we were looking for something for individual clients. Yeah, yeah, which is just what he's given us.
You're right. You're right. You're absolutely right. Okay, I got it. I got it.
And that's very reasonable.
That, I, I think you need to require it.
Yes.
A lot of times what happens.
It's all coming back to me.
You'll, you'll build a house without that in place, they'll put their gutters going on in the neighbor's yard.
Right.
All of that stuff. When, what they have to do is sometimes construction basically, it's very simple to do it. You can put it underground, you can put it above ground, but I think that that gotta require.
And, and are we, these are just residential, or are we talking about even commercial is the same thing? This is, okay, so, um, so I think we should still reach out to like, maybe get two more, two more stabs at it. So I really will do it this time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you get a couple of, uh, quotes from different engineers in the area, um, just as how much work there is to go around right now. There's no guarantee that somebody's gonna be available.
Right, yeah. Does Summit do that?
What's that?
Summit?
Probably not on the individual scale.
Okay, okay.
Probably not, but they might.
But I, but I will, I will do that. I will put that on my, on my action items list. Prestige and Tyler.
Prestige is not an engineering firm. Prestige is not an engineering.
You're not, okay, but so if anybody knows of some engineering firms that do this, then please just shoot it to me. And I'll, and I'll reach out to as many people as I can, and I really will get this done this time. Um, I think we're down to, uh, number six, town, town manager comments. Zach? Yeah.
Couple updates. Uh, we have the spring yard of the season contest, uh, taking place this Friday. It's the spring yard of the season contest. So you have the garden club and I believe the celebrity guest judge, which is Todd Arson from Public Works Department. So, um, so I hope everybody will share the word with your neighbors. Last time I checked, there was only two people signed up. So the chances are pretty good right now. So if you can spread the word, um, if you've got a house on your street or in your neighborhood that looks, you know, really, really good and is, uh, in full bloom, and you think would be a good contender, definitely pass the word along. Um, Loews has been great in sponsoring that contest and providing gift cards for the winner. So, um, a little bit of an incentive and then the bragging rights would be in the yard of the season to get a sign in their yard to display, um, for that season. So definitely encourage everybody to pass that word along.
How do we nominate?
So they can either go to the town website, there's a signup form on there, um, can give Barbara a call, um, up here at town hall or send her an email. Um, and we'll walk them through. We just need to get their contact info so we can put them on the list so that when the garden club is going around, they know which houses to, uh, go out and judge. That's.
The person who is being nominated has to consent.
Yeah, cause, so the. So the, the garden club will walk, they walk all around the yard, they take it all in. Um, so yeah, we definitely want their consent before. We'll be doing a May movie in the park, um, date to be determined on that, but, uh, we're gonna put a poll out on Facebook and try to determine what movie is gonna be shown, um, so stay tuned for that. And, uh, got the board meetings on Monday. We have a budget workshop before that, so that starts at four o'clock PM in this room. So, um, definitely exciting time of the year. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. Am I missing anything else, Barbara?
Town garden.
The community garden. So we got the, uh, really appreciate Lowsome Improvement in Cape Carteret. They donated, um, gave us 75% discount on the lumber, and then they donated the block. Um, they were able to get the donation of, uh, all of the raised bed, uh, soil. Um, and so it was, it was great to have them come forward and help us get that effort off the grounds. Uh, if anybody is interested in volunteering to pull weeds at the community garden or to water or, you know, we're gonna have a couple of different roles out there. Definitely spread that word, um, just kinda pass that contact info on to Barbara so we can send that out and kinda work out. Uh, we're still working through the logistics of exactly what that's gonna look like. It's off of, uh, the Heel Lane, so, um, we, it, it's exciting to see some utilization of that track there. Uh, we're gonna try to get some picnic tables and benches out there as well. Um, and hopefully that'll be a, you know, a catalyst to doing some additional things out there on that site. But, um, I think that'll be a nice addition. We've also got the community garden that's out here next to town hall. Um, that's primarily a melon garden this year. The watermelons and honeydew have come up. And then we'll have a bunch of flowers out there, so that'll be nice as well. So, uh, but two different community gardens in town. Um, and like I said, really appreciate Loews stepping up and, uh, and helping out with that effort. So that's the majority of what I've got this season.
Community garden question?
Yes.
So who's managing that? Is it, are there like plots and areas that are assigned to a family, or how does that, how does that work?
So that's, we're just kinda gauging interest right now. If there is a family that wants to adopt one of the raised beds and provide the plants and tend to it. We would definitely encourage that. We want it to be a community-led effort, so the more community involvement, the better. Um, so definitely would encourage that. We had reached out to a couple of businesses and kinda floated the idea if they wanted to adopt a bed and have a sign there. Um, you know, kinda just trying to get some of that off the ground, but we definitely need community involvement with all types of folks, especially in the neighborhood that can walk over there and kinda tend to it to keep an eye on it. So, um, I know Susan's got some experience in, uh, growing, I think, watermelons, right, hay bales out there.
I'm telling you, that was great to do last year, and this year, those same, um, containers that I used, I have been getting broccoli and cabbage out of that already.
Oh, wow.
Unbelievable. Once that all start to, you know, kinda decompose, that nitrogen-rich soil is giving me all kinds of good green stuff.
Sounds like we have a qualified volunteer, our first one. So right now we got six of them, um, good sized beds. Uh, we'd like to add more in the future. Uh, then we're also gonna do a big watermelon area out there, um, as well, so, um, and then Loews also donated some pollinator friendly seed. So we're gonna try to do a little bit of flowers at each one of the parks throughout the town and have a little Bee City USA sign just to raise awareness of us being a bee city and, uh, the importance of pollinators. So, yeah, it's a lot of exciting things. I think it's gonna help beautify the town and, you know, add some more flowers out there that people can enjoy all summer long. So, um, we'll have some of those up there at the Heel Lane Community Garden and, uh, and all the parks throughout the town. That's all I've got.
I can't stop. I have more questions. Um, so Bee City. Does that mean anyone in Carteret can, I mean, in Cape Carteret can raise bees?
Yes, right now, I mean, there's no restrictions on, there are some people who are beekeepers in Cape Carteret.
I've seen it, but I didn't know if there were like certain communities where it was allowed and certain communities where it was prohibited.
Not by any town standards. I've heard of Paxton on covenants, uh, but I'm not aware of any town standards, you know, that would. But we do have two in town.
I've never seen anything one way or the other.
You can't have chickens. I know, I wanted a chicken.
I am interested. I'll watch it. Uh, my last point, and I promise it's the last one. We had some old drawings of notional conceptual parks for the Bahia site, and I brought those tonight afterwards. If anybody's interested in taking a quick look, take a look. You know, it was just some ideas that people had, that I had, that some other people had that we incorporated into some drawings.
I think that's great.
There's also the original drawings, all the faded drawings of that somewhere in that room in here. I had, I saw them three or four years ago.
She got anything?
No, but I, I'm seriously considering planning some hours. Excuse me, um, buying some dehats. And I've not moved my clothes. Everyone needs to be vocal this year.
You got anything?
Only three more things. No, I'm kidding. I'm done.
I, the, uh, you know, I'm, I know I'm beating dead horse here, but I really want us to get some, uh, Board of Commissioners tasking. So we have, uh, you know, somebody's gotta be driving this bus, and, uh, and I think that's the best way for us to gain credibility is to go to the Board of Commissioners and say, this is what we think needs to be done. Let us know, uh, what you think. And I think that could be achieved by a joint meeting. I think it's, it would be valuable for us to have a joint meeting to flush that out. And I am recommending that we actually do a text change to the UDO that, uh, that, that does that. There would always be an annual meeting every year, same month every year, um, and that that's what we do is we, is we do that tasking. Uh, wouldn't be the only thing we can do, or at least it would, it would kinda get us all on the same sheet of music and, uh, you know, whether, you know, whether we prioritize it or reprioritize it through the year. Um, I think it's important, it's important that we can get on the same sheet of music and, uh, and get their support for what we're doing.
Discussion item, the other item. There are ways we could do that. I think we should do it, absolutely.
With the joint meeting?
Have, have any joint meetings, but it doesn't have to be one way. Another way, it could be a variety of ways.
Sure.
We get to an answer for this board, but that kind of like, then I, they know they're working on this.
Yeah, it makes sense for us to provide them with some of our recommendations as well. And, um, the, of, one of the commissioners is just on to come for our meeting. Um, I think it's a different commissioner and, um, maybe Commissioner Morgan can bring that up at the next meeting, you know, I carry the race. For the Board of Commissioners on, on that thing. And the other thing is that, uh, I am, uh, now that you have elected me yet for yet another year, I plan on standing up a Parks and Rec steering committee. To get an idea of, uh, what, what the town wants to do regarding Parks and Rec. And then once we have a good understanding of what, what the town wants, then we could go forward with planning how that, how that could happen. So, you know, maybe where it will happen, uh, what different things, but, but that's for the residents to provide. And I think it should be a steering committee that's made up of young families with small children, um, GJ's like me, who, you know, take a little one to the park in the town. Um, you know, people who are voters, uh, you know, you know, I mean, I, I think we have enough things for voters and people who fish off of peers. Um, but I, but I think it would be important if we get a group of people together that are interested in telling us on the planning board what, what they wanna see for, for Parks and Rec in the future. Um, and that will help us, you know, maybe I'm totally off base, maybe Bahia Lane, the Bahia Lane Park shouldn't be a playground. Maybe it should be, um, you know, just a, a community garden and that's where we grow all our watermelons and watermelon. Um, but I think it's, it's important that, that we just facilitate the town telling us what they want. And then once they tell us, then we, we kinda make that, you know, home planning system. Okay, so that is something that I, we should, we should start thinking about in the future. Maybe start spreading the word and, you know, to people you think would be good to sit on, on that steering. Yeah, there's a lot about Parks and Rec.
I don't know if the name's much, but we had the last year.
Oh, Amy said it.
The summit, sir.
Yes. Yeah, people talk a lot about Parks, yeah. Uh, that's all I got. Anybody got anything? Commissioner Morgan, you got anything? Uh, okay, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn? And a second, Sarah, thank you for seconding that. Can I see a show of hands? Misses Paris, good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming, Doc. Appreciate it. Thanks, Commissioner Morgan.